Hello, everyone.
This meeting is being recorded.
Hello.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Jesse.
Hi, sorry, that was, um, I had some tough technical difficulties with this agenda packet. And it's still loading, so I'm just waiting. Are we, do we have what we need? Okay. Um, okay, so it looks like we have Jim and Shannon. We have Stacy. Jim. Misha. Taya, sorry, I'm just making sure I can go through roll call. Jonathan. And me, is that everybody? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, I suppose. It is 5:32. It is also Wednesday, November 16th. Um, welcome. We have a couple of requests this evening. We have our new city planner visiting, or not even visiting, she's here officially, Jennifer Severson. So thank you for being here this evening. Jennifer gave me and the rest of the planning board members just a few helpful hints and suggestions in making our planning boards a little bit smoother. So the first request is that I leave my microphone and camera on and then all planning board members leave theirs on off, but their cameras on, so you can mute yourselves, keep your cameras on, and then when you're ready to unmute, go for it. And then for the audience and the members of the public who are joining us, the, the request is that you keep your cameras off and your microphone off until you're ready to make a comment. At that time, you can turn your cameras on. That goes for the presenters this evening as well. And then when it, when you are called upon, you can turn your cameras on and turn your microphone off. That way, even though we are on Zoom, it does feel like this is a, a public hearing and the planning board is present and our staff is present and we can focus on each other throughout the meeting. So thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. We are gonna start with roll call. So just unmute yourself and say that you're here, please. Shannon?
Present.
Stacy? Is here?
Sit here.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Jim Barrett?
Here.
Misha?
Here.
Taya?
Here.
Tori? Go ahead, Tori.
Sorry, here.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan?
Here.
And Jesse is here. Okay, great. We have several months of minutes to approve. So thanks to Faith for adding this into the addendum, but we have our minutes to approve for June 23rd of 2022, August 17th of 2022, and September 21st of 2022. We'll approve those minutes first. Does anybody have any questions about those minutes? Or do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Taya. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Misha. So I have a motion by Taya and a second by Misha. Let's go through, whoa, roll call. Shannon?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Taya?
Yes.
Tori? Yeah, sorry, we couldn't hear you, Tori, or I couldn't.
Sorry, for?
Thank you. Jonathan?
Yes.
And Jesse is yes. Okay, so the minutes pass. We had three months of minutes on the addendum. It's November. I believe we need to also approve October minutes. Although those, that is not what's listed on the agenda, it just says approval of minutes. But I think we have to approve October minutes as well. Did everybody receive the minutes from Jonathan for October?
Jesse, we, we had no meeting in October.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. I'm lucky, I know that it's November. Okay. We are going to open it up to general public comment. This is comment on topics that the planning board has jurisdiction over. It is not comments that will be on agenda items that come later. So please, you can turn your camera on and unmute yourself if you have a comment. We give everybody on the planning board meeting three minutes and I'll hold up a timer for you. So if you have public comment, please state your name and your address. Frank Schroeder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, I'm Frank Schroeder, Chair of Friends Park County. My address is 477 Mill Creek Road in Prey. We will not be testifying on the North Town subdivision application. However, my remarks address a bigger issue. Tonight and in recent meetings, you have been faced with major development proposals that are inconsistent with the core principles in the 2021 growth policy. A policy that your board, Friends of Park County and many others, spent so much time developing in 2020 and 2021. Those principles call for focusing new commercial development in the downtown core and favoring more compact residential development with increased housing choices. It's already been 17 months since the city commission approved the growth policy without the substantial reforms to zoning, infrastructure, and annexation policy and other matters needed to implement the growth policy. In our view, the longer you wait, the harder it will become to translate the growth policy from rhetoric into reality. To date, these problematic proposals have been for development inside the city limits. You've been fortunate in not facing a major residential subdivision proposal for the area in the ETJ designated in the growth policy as pastoral open space. Nor have you been confronted with a development proposal for lands outside the city limits which your growth policy inadvertently gave urban instead of rural land development designations. Those urban land development designations are applied to an area bigger than downtown Livingston. But sooner or later, we think you will be faced with one of these applications. We know implementation is hard work and time consuming. If you think that we can help you with this work by providing ideas, draft of examples from other places, or in other ways, just let us know. In the interim, perhaps your attorney can draft a creative amendment to the zoning ordinance that gives the growth policy itself some direct effect on land use decisions until all the changes to zoning can be prepared. For the future, we suggest that the planning board accompany updates to the growth policy with proposals, proposed implementation measures that can be considered adopted concurrently with the growth policy. Thank you for your service and your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. Would anyone like to make a pub, a general public comment? You can turn your camera on and unmute yourself. Second call for general public comment. Somebody's connecting to audio, but I'm not quite sure. Last call, public comment, general comments. Okay, thank you, we're gonna close public comment. And we're gonna move on to new business. I just wanted to mention that there is an addendum to the agenda and, and at the end of our public hearing, we will be voting on two applicants for the planning board. So just hang tight, everybody, you've gotta do that afterwards. So we're gonna move on to new business. The preliminary plat, North Town subdivision faces 4A, 4B, and 5. We have staff, I believe, on Jim and both Jim and Jennifer, who will present us with the report.
I will, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the North Town subdivision, as you stated. Faces 4A, 4B, and 5. The background for this is Mr. Bill Mullenfeld and Mr. Matt Four, owners of property described as lot 3A of the North Town subdivision, located north of the Palace Edition, proposing to create 88 residential lots. The development would be a continuation of the previous phase of the subdivision, which is nearly built out and located on Sweetgrass Lane. The property was annexed into the city in 2008 and is owned medium density residential R2. Findings of fact from the staff include the following, the effect on agriculture. Would the subdivision remove agricultural or timberland from significant existing or potential production capacity? Staff answer is no. Would the subdivision remove from production agricultural lands that are critical to the area's agricultural operations? Staff answer is no. Would the subdivision create significant conflict with nearby agricultural operations, creating problems moving livestock, operating farm machinery, water supplies, controlling weeds, et cetera? Staff answer is no, there are no intensive agricultural activities in the immediate area. Number four under this category, how would the subdivision affect the value of nearby agricultural lands? And basically, I'm referring back to question three, there are no intensive agricultural activities in the immediate area. Category number two is the effect on agricultural water users' facilities. Would the subdivision create significant conflict with agricultural water users' facilities, creating problems for operating or maintaining your irrigation systems or creating nuisance complaints, the safety concerns, noises, et cetera? The answer from staff is there are no known agricultural water users' facilities affected by this project. Category number three is the effect on local services. What additional or expanded public services and facilities would be demanded to serve this subdivision? Staff answer is water, sewer, garbage collection, police, fire, and EMS services. What additional costs would result for services such as streets, law enforcement, parks, recreation, fire protection, water, sewer, solid, solid waste, schools, and busing, including additional personnel, equipment, construction, maintenance costs? Staff answer to this question is the cost of police and fire services will obviously increase as the population increases. The amount attributed to this development is integrated into our current impact fee schedule. The next question is who would bear these costs? The impact fees are paid at the time building permits are issued. Can the service providers meet the additional costs given legal and other constraints? Staff's answer is that the city's impact fees are designed to offset the increase in costs. Would the subdivision allow existing services through expanded use to operate more efficiently or make the installation of improvements, but were services feasible? Staff answer is that this project, it will extend the city's water and sewer systems to the north. While these systems can provide service to this development, it's unlikely that the efficiency of these systems will be affected. What are the present tax revenues received from the unsubdivided land by the county, city, and schools? The answer is it's approximately $6,941. What are, what are the, what would be the approximate revenues received by each of the above taxing authorities when the subdivision improved and built upon? Staff estimates that the approximate amount of tax revenue divided amongst the three taxing jurisdictions would be between $60,000 and $100,000. Would new taxes generated from the subdivision cover additional public costs? Staff answer is that in general, it is believed that residential property does not pay enough through property taxes to cover the costs of the services provided. However, with the impact fees, it is much more likely for projects to pay for themselves. Would any special improvement districts be created which would obligate the city fiscally or administratively for this project? Staff answer is no. Next category is the effect on the natural environment. How would the subdivision affect surface and groundwater soils, slopes, vegetation, historical or archaeological features, and visual features within the subdivision or on adjacent lands? Staff answer to this question is no known historic or archaeological resources are present. No surface waters are present within this project. Would any stream banks be altered, streams rechanneled, or any surface water contaminated runoff carrying sedimentation or other pollutants? Staff answer is no. Would groundwater supplies likely be contaminated or depleted as a result of this subdivision? Staff answer is no, this project will be serviced by public utilities. Would construction or streets, would construction of streets or building sites result in excessive cuts and fills or slopes or cause erosion on unstable soils? Staff answer is no. Would significant vegetation be removed causing soil erosion or banking stability? Staff answer is no, proper construction techniques as directed by DEQ could avoid any erosion problems. Would significant historical or archaeological features be damaged or destroyed by this subdivision? Again, the answer is no known historic or archaeological resources exist on this property. And finally, under this category, would the subdivision be subject to natural hazards such as flooding, rock, snow, or landslides, high winds, severe wildfires, or difficulties such as shallow bedrock, high water table, unstable or expansive soils, or excessive slopes? Staff answer is high winds are a concern everywhere in Livingston. Known storm damage issues will have to be mitigated through proper engineering design. Next category is the effect on wildlife and wildlife habitat. How would the subdivision affect critical wildlife areas such as big game wintering range, migration routes, nesting areas, wetlands, or other important habitat? Staff answer is this subdivision is not located within critical wildlife habitat. How would pets or human activity affect wildlife? Staff answer to that question is human wildlife interaction is expected to be minimal with this location and city's animal control ordinances will apply. The final category is the effect on public health and safety. Would the subdivision be subject to hazardous C-vision due to high voltage lines, airports, highways, railroads, high pressure gas lines, or adjacent industrial uses? Staff answer to this question is no. What existing uses may subject, may be subject to complaints from residents of this subdivision? Staff answer is that none have been identified. And what public health or safety hazards such as dangerous traffic or fire conditions would be created by this subdivision? Again, staff answer is none have been identified. This subdivision application is requesting a variance from our design criteria. The standard in our design criteria states that alleys are required in all residential subdivisions. The request is that the applicant wishes to plac this subdivision with no alleys due to the topography of the site. Staff recommendation for the variances as follows. Given the steep and varied terrain in the development, inclusion of alleys in the design would likely preclude the use of the property for residential purposes. Because this variance request will not be detrimental to public welfare or causing increase in public costs, and because it would not place the subdivision in non-conformance with adopted zoning regulations, staff recommends that the planning board recommend to the city commission that the variance request be approved. Which brings us to the recommendation on the overall project. And based on these findings of fact, and after reviewing the application, the planning department recommends that the city planning board recommend conditional approval of this subdivision. The conditions follow. Number one, also, and water main extensions will be a minimum of eight inch. Dorm water design will meet all applicable DEQ standards. A Montana licensed engineer or his supervisor representative will be required to be on-site during utility construction. Any utility reimbursement plan must be submitted to and approved by the city prior to the beginning of construction. The subdivision will be responsible for all required street signing to include traffic control as well as street name signs. All signs will be built and installed according to city specifications. Painting of curbs and fire hydrants will also be required. Any improvements agreements for deferred infrastructure need to be reviewed and approved by the city prior to the beginning of construction. The subdivision will, in consultation with the county extension office, prepare a noxious weed plan to mitigate the spread of weeds to adjacent properties. Proof of compliance with this plan will be required in order to gain final approval. All outdoor lighting in this development will be required to be night sky friendly. City standard street lights will be required throughout the development. And the final condition, number nine, final approval for the first phase will require compliance with all of these conditions as well as completion or financial guarantee. The water main loop connection from Sweetgrass Lane through Phase 4B and 4A along Wild Drive and back to scenic trail. That concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodhull. Now we're gonna move into the applicant's presentation. Mr. Mullenfield or Mr. Schultz, is that you? There we go. Mr. Fower, are you presenting on behalf of the?
Hi, Chair Wilcox, this is Garrett Schultz.
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Hey, perfect. Okay, well, as I said, I'm Garrett Schultz, I'm a civil engineer for Headwaters Engineering at 190 North Star Lane in Bozeman. I'm here with Matt Four and Bill Mullenfeld of North Town Development Corp. We're all over here at Matt's office to collaborate on any questions you might have after our presentation. Thanks, Jim, for that thorough staff report. I'm gonna try not to be too repetitive here and just kinda hit our points of interest. I wanna start with the history of the project. As Jim mentioned, it was annexed in 2008. The current proposal is for phases 4A, 4B, and 5. This subdivision has already come before you as a master plan. With Phase 1 in 2018, there were 16 locks proposed and approved that are now almost all are completely built out. In 2020, Phases 2 and 3 came before you. That was 37 locks, that subdivision was approved. Again, this current proposal of Phases 4A, 4B, and 5 were included in the master plan by request of the city at that time. And then those two phases are also nearly completely built out. So, so there has been a big need for single-family housing in Livingston, as we've seen. And that's what this project is aiming to continue as a single-family development. It is phased as, like I said, 4A, 4B, and 5, a total of 88 lots. Most of the reason for the phasing, you know, has to do with market conditions and the ability to build part of the infrastructure at a time. As Jim mentioned, with his conditions of approval, the applicant is, is fully capable and willing to meet all of those conditions, including either a financial guarantee. I think that would be the first preference, a financial guarantee of that water main loop. Or if market conditions allow, you can do that with Phase 4A and 4B combined. This project, other, other facts, it's 100.104 acres, we mentioned it's 88 lots. The area of development is roughly 38 acres. And then a future phase or phases will include what is shown as lot B on the plaque, which is another 65 acres and could accommodate another 135 lots. It should be noted that the North Side Transportation Plan, when it considered development in this area, accounted for up to 550 homes on this parcel. And the applicant is proposing 237 with his current and future plans. Again, I thought Jim was, was pretty thorough, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda touch on the areas of the growth policy, I think we hit well, and some of the aims of this subdivision. So mostly, this was done collaboratively. I think it's really important to highlight that we have been working with Shannon and Martha and Jim and the city offices for about a year now on the planning side of things and also the public work side of things. Hopefully, you found our application to be thorough, we tried to get, while not all the infrastructure obviously is, is final, we tried to show a layout for water, sewer, storm, roadways, that, that shows how this subdivision lays out well. And now, you know, over the last several months, we've been working with particularly Shannon and Martha as we work through infrastructure submittals. So largely, the subdivision conforms with the subdivision regulations, which deals with lock configuration, access, street design standards, minimizing fire risk, and the variance authorization and request procedure. We do have one requested variance that Jim mentioned that I'm gonna touch on later. As I mentioned in the history of the project, this project has already been annexed into the city. It's already been considered by the commission multiple times as an R2 parcel. It's not an expansion, it's classic infill, it's already in the roads, water, sewer, all those facilities already exist right to the doorstep of this development. Additionally, with that condition of approval for water, this subdivision provides a major benefit to the city's water infrastructure. It will have a loop along Wild Drive connects to Sweetgrass Avenue for redundancy, flow, and pressure support. We've already consulted with the city's engineer TDNH and received comments back that the city has adequate capacity for sewer, has appropriate pressure and flows for water, and is able to handle this subdivision from an infrastructure perspective. I think I will go right into the growth policy, some of the key elements of the growth policy. Goal 3.1, prioritize infill over expansion by taking advantage of existing and planned infrastructures such transportation, energy, water, and sewer facilities. As I just mentioned, all of those things exist at this site already. You know, we don't have to go run water and sewer or new roadways to some distant parcel, it's already in the city with these existing facilities. It's been shown on the city's future land use map within the growth, growth policy as residential medium density, which we're proposing to comply with. Goal 4.3, protect and manage natural resources, open spaces, and wildlife. Wildlife, we consulted with Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks early in the process. They deem that it's not a critical wildlife corridor. There are some species that, just like almost anywhere in Livingston, will use it from time to time, but there's elements of the covenants that address living with wildlife, so just not letting your dogs roam free. We're exploring trash resistance or bear resistant trash containers, it sounds like that, that would kinda be a new thing for Livingston, that was a comment that FWB had to explore. I actually talked with Shannon a little bit about that today. I'm so certainly open to doing what it takes based on those expert recommendations. The last point on that goal is the fact that over 25% of this parcel is proposed as either open space or parkland. Only 11% was required for the design standards, so largely making natural resources Only eleven percent was required for the design standards, so largely making natural resources and open space. Goal five point one, provide housing options to meet the needs of all residents. Okay, well, that's largely done through zoning. Um, the zoning board has already zoned that R two, which means it can accommodate single-family housing or two-family units. Um, which is exactly what is, is proposed, largely single-family units, although um, there's nothing that would preclude somebody from uh, building two units on certain lots. Um, as I mentioned, with the first three phases, there's a large need in Livingston for single-family housing. Um, obviously, I'm sure we're gonna hear uh, you know, some comments later about affordable housing and multifamily and, and things like that. This parcel has been zoned R two. So, we have proposed a subdivision development, um, that the city has asked for by zoning it R two. Goal eight point one, improve pedestrian and bicycle safety within the city. A lot of planning went into this um, development from a, an engineering perspective. If you've been out to the site, it has significant topography, significant terrain. Um, Matt and Bill, the owners have um, invested to make this project feasible. And one of those, one of the ways that they did that was all of our roads are less than five percent grades. All of our roads have city sidewalk on both sides. Um, providing connectivity at the scenic trail, to Sweetgrass Avenue and the nearby um, sidewalk and road system. Additionally, there's a thirty-seven hundred lineal foot um, trail system proposed with this subdivision. Um, largely, uh, as I mentioned, you know, the terrain accommodates that. Um, I don't think it has to be anything fancy for people to go out and use that open space. Um, it, the, the topography creates a unique opportunity for hiking, mountain biking, and just accessing open space. Goal eight point two, create a complete and well-maintained transportation network within the city. Um, that one, as I mentioned, there's existing access. Uh, this new connection to this development, which would be phase two and three, the connection is two and three, provides a second access to all these homes, um, that are already there. So by constructing Wild Ride Drive, um, we're providing two accesses from scenic trail, which helps uh, with connectivity, helps with emergency management, helps public works pick up trash, helps the postal service. Does all these things to improve the transportation network within the city. Goal nine point two, ensure adequate public parks, trails, and recreation system to support the community now and in the future. A lot of these goals tie in together, um, and, and there's a bit of an echo, but uh, the open space, as I mentioned, twenty-five percent of this parcel being dedicated for open space, only eleven percent was required, the vastness of the trail system. For mountain biking, hiking, walking, dog walking, um, all of those things. Think I'd like to jump to the variance. Um, as Jim mentioned, we have one variance that we're requesting on this project. It's not a new request. Um, the first three phases of this development have already been approved and constructed with no alleys. Um, the uniqueness, there's several things that are unique about our development. Um, but one of them is the fact that we are connecting to Sweetgrass Avenue, Sweetgrass Avenue does not have alleys. Um, so there would be no alleys to connect to at that end. Um, another very significant factor in this development, as I mentioned, is the topography. So the city has said by annexing it and zoning it and approving the master plan multiple times that this uh, that this parcel um, is worthy of being included as, as a city development. Um, and this application seeks to put forth a viable, feasible way to develop this parcel that's got so much topography on it. Um, I'm gonna read word for word, uh, our requested variance. Um, and then I think, I think that's gonna be the last part for me, but bear with me while I read, please. In conjunction with preliminary plat submittal for the proposed eighty-eight lot North Town Major Subdivision, phases four A, four B, and five, we're requesting a variance from the following section of the City of Livingston subdivision regulations. Um, I don't read Roman numerals real well, section four dash A dash eight B improvements. Alleys designed in accordance with table one should be provided in all residential subdivisions. That's what we're requesting a variance from. So variance from the City of Livingston Design Improvement Standards, maybe all.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, you became muted, oh, there you go.
All good?
Yeah, now you're good.
You just didn't wanna hear me read word for word.
Somebody didn't. Just kidding.
When due to the characteristics of land proposed for subdivision, strict compliance with these standards would result in undue hardship and would not be essential to the public welfare. Is our opinion that due to the characteristics of the subject property, strict compliance with the subdivision regulations would indeed create an undue hardship. But I also believe that alleys are not essential to the public welfare. As access to public utilities and private driveways will be provided via subdivision access roads designed to meet City of Livingston standards. The granting of a variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general wealth, welfare, or injurious to other adjoining properties. The granting of this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, including adjoining properties. Access for emergency service vehicles to each property will be provided via the proposed subdivision access roads. All homes will be designed with garage doors facing the access roads and on-street parking available along the access roads. Nearby subdivisions, including phases one to three of the North Town Major Subdivision, do not include alleys. And were previously granted variance from this alley requirement. The current proposed configuration of phases four A, four B, and five, with only minor revisions, has already been depicted on the master plan submitted along with the preliminary plat for phases one to three. And reviewed by planning staff, the planning board, and the city commission at that time. The laid up, layout of phases four A, four B, and five would conform to surrounding properties and provide uniformity and methods of access. The City of Livingston Fire and Rescue Department, in addition to City of Livingston Police, were both provided a map of the proposed subdivision and asked to comment regarding each respective agency's ability to serve the subdivision. Both agencies responded and stated no objections to the subdivision layout or issues providing service. Due to physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the property involves strict compliance with the regulations will impose an undue hardship on the owner. Undue hardship does not include personal or financial hardship or any hardship that is self-imposed. Existing physical surroundings, including steep and varying top, topography, would pose an undue hardship on the owner. The subject property includes steep ridges composed primarily of hard rock with grades up to thirty percent. The subdivision layout has been carefully designed to meet City of Livingston road and sidewalk grading requirements and to limit the amount of rock excavation required to construct the lots. The terrain of this parcel is extreme in comparison to most subdivisions, maybe all subdivisions, within the City of Livingston. If alleys were required in this subdivision, significant rock excavation and cut areas up to fifteen-foot cut depths and significant embankment in fill areas up to thirteen feet of fill depths would be required. Sections of the alley would be immediately adjacent to vertical rock walls. Other sections would be adjacent to fill slopes. We believe creating these conditions by requiring alleys would create a less safe neighborhood and detract from the overall public benefit of the subdivision. Please see appendix one for photos of the existing property. The variance will not cause a substantial increase in public costs. There are no anticipated public costs that would increase with the granting of this variance. Water and sewer mains will be installed in the roadways with services to the front of each lot. This is the most efficient layout to serve both sides of the street, so public utility costs are minimized. Solid waste will be collected in bins along the roadway adjacent to each driveway at the front of each lot on specified garbage space. Bins will be off the street on non-pickup days. Apple turnaround space for waste disposal trucks will be provided at each cul-de-sac. Overall road maintenance costs will be minimized as there will be less pavement to maintain without including alleys. And finally, the variance will not place the subdivision in non-conformance with any adopted zoning regulations. Granting of this variance would not place the subdivision in non-conformance with any zoning regulations. The requested very, variance does not impact the height and size of buildings, percentage of lots occupied by buildings, the size of setbacks and open space, the density of population, or the location of the buildings. Proximity to schools, residential neighborhoods, and public infrastructure makes this property a great candidate for residential development. Thank you for bearing with me, uh, while I, I love that, I think it was important to hear that whole, um, submittal. And with that, those are the issues that I wanted to touch on, I'm certainly available for questions, I have Matt and Bill here with me, um, for, for questions or for follow-up, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schultz. So, planning board, before we open it up to public comment, I wanna make sure that you guys don't have any technical questions for either the staff or the applicant. Tori has a technical question, so go ahead, Tori, why don't you unmute yourself?
Uh, this is, this is for Mr. Schultz, would you please explain how the topography has, um, impacted the, the decisions on the layout of the streets? Um, I, I, I understand that um, topography is a factor in, um, whether or not you are able to provide alleys, and I imagine imagine that's, that's also related to describing how that has affected the street orientation, I would appreciate it.
Thanks, Tori. Okay, thanks, Tori, cut out on me just a hair at the end there, but I think I got, um, what you were saying. So yeah, as I mentioned, um, this area has ridges, um, that run through the majority of this terrain. Um, I also mentioned that only minor revisions to the master plan have occurred, one of those slight revisions um, was shifting Wild Ride Drive slightly east. Um, so it's more in the bottom of that valley, so to say, between those two ridges. Um, where we can provide for um, wider lots. Um, and, and be able to meet the city's grading requirement for roadways of five percent. It should be noted that, you know, any time that there was a discrepancy between the city's design standards and the subdivision regulations, um, in almost all, not every case, but almost all, we went to the uh, more conservative, um, uh, number, in this case, it would be a sixty-four foot right away. Um, that was another change from the master plan, I believe previously they were all sixty-foot rightaways, or at least a portion were sixties. Um, and so to try to best meet the subdivision regs, um, everything is a sixty-four foot right away, which um, as far as the topography is concerned, um, that was, was part of our intent in shifting roadways as far from, um, the ridge lines as we could to minimize rock excavations, if you've driven by that area, those exposed ridges or anywhere that those existing home sites have, have, have dug into, you can see that it's primarily rock. Uh, which is, which is very hard, um, constructability wise. Um, another thing I would say, topography wise, this proposal is actually slightly less, uh, number of lots than the master plan. Um, we actually dropped two lots from the far end of Blue Stem, um, because of how steep it was. Um, so that's another air, another way that the topography impacted thi- this design. And then lastly, I guess I would add that, you know, we, we brought in a geotactical engineer very early in the process um, to make this site viable and something that anybody would go, um, try to develop. Those ridges that are made primarily of rock, we've come up with a way to, uh, crush that rock and reuse it as we, um, build up some of the roadways, Wild Rise is very much built up where it meets Choke Cherry. Uh, I think to the tune of ten to twelve feet. Um, and the creative engineering that went into that was that rock crushing operation um, to raise that road and meet city requirements of five percent grading.
Uh, Tori, do you have any other questions?
That's it for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim, I see your hand up, go ahead and unmute yourself.
And my question's for Mr. Schultz again. Um, back in your presentation, you were speaking of the water connectivity. And I, I'm sure I misunderstood you, but I'm assuming that you're meaning that you're not providing any additional water from any source in the development, or are you simply talking about a loop back around to the city's source?
Sure, so everything in this development will be on city services, uh, the exist, there's an existing main. Can everybody hear me? Sorry, we're, we're, uh, running multiple laptops. Um, the water in the area, uh, is already, there's an existing main on scenic trail. There's an existing main on Sweetgrass Avenue. Uh, what this development proposes to do is install new mains uh, on the new roadways, which would be Wild Ride, Blue Stem, and Wheat Ridge. Uh, the water would start at scenic trail, it would run up to the north and loop back to the west where it's currently stubbed out from phase three of, of the first, of the, sorry, one of the first phases, phase three. Um, and so we would connect at that point, utilize city water and extend mains to serve, um, the development within the development.
Thank you.
You can see that on page one oh seven of the packet two, Jim, I just happen to be looking at that. Thank you, Mr. Schultz, any other planning board members want to ask a technical, technical question, you can raise your hand, Jonathan, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, uh, Garrett, thank you for the presentation, and I really appreciate the detail you went into. Um, I was wondering, you said something about a lot of the, about being able to build duplexes on the lots. And, um, having a variety of homes, but, um, according to the North Town Covenant, that I think we were provided, it said that the lots shall be used only for single-family residential and related uses, and it should be one single-family residence allowed per lot, so I just wanted to clarify that and see if you are allowed to in fact build duplexes and if you're allowed to build.
Have a change. Do you wanna take that one?
Unmute, can't hear you, you're gonna have to unmute either, one of you will have to unmute Matt or Garrett. There you go, yes.
This is Matt Four.
You wanna switch chairs with Garrett? It's very echoing. Very echoey.
Okay, um. Does Matt go fourteen twenty-five West Main? Hold on. Looking at two different things.
On mute. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, that sounds great.
I can't, I can't hear.
Can you hear me? Go ahead, Mr. Four. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Matt four fourteen twenty-five West Main, Montana. Um, answering the question regarding um uh duplexes on these lots. Um, just wanted to note that the original covenants for the subdivision were written prior to. The ordinance change from the city's perspective that would have allowed. Um, you know, two units on a single lot. So our covenants are just a little bit behind because. As we were developing, um, that that was not allowed by the city. So obviously, we couldn't allow it in our covenants. Now that it is allowed in our city, we will likely revise our covenants to allow uh that same density that the city allows.
Just to follow up, um, could, so that includes um accessory dwelling units as well, like you wouldn't limit those in your covenants?
No. Yeah, the any, any, uh, if you wanted to build an ADU uh with with your house, again, that's a. That's a uh ordinance that the city has put in place and and so um right now our covenants don't agree with that. But again, that was because our covenants were written prior to that change.
Does that answer your question, Jonathan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Four. Does any other planning board member have a question, a technical question? Stacy?
Yes, um, I wanted to compliment you on a very thorough packet that you put together. It was so large, it was hard to get on our computers. Um, the question that I have is related to. Um, I I couldn't quite locate where you had your actual trails uh set aside. For this second phase. So. Um, could somebody answer that? Or tell me, or what page it's on, or so we could all see it.
Do you have the the page number for this?
Well, it it's the actual drawing, page two and three of the submitted plat and appendix C.
Did you get that?
Did somebody put that up on the screen or something?
Do, do we have it electronically?
If you can tell us what page number is in the packet, that, do you have the packet in front of you, Stacy? Let's see.
Uh, no, I don't have the whole packet. That's why I couldn't find it.
Okay.
Exactly.
Page twelve and thirteen of the packet.
I might be, oh, I, you know what? I don't have control. It's the staff that has control. Of the.
Can the staff put up pages twelve and thirteen? Might be easier because it's so hard to tell.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Shannon.
Hi.
We're we're pulling that out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, while he's pulling that up, maybe I can ask another question. Um. On the, all the cul-de-sacs that you have put in here at the top of phase five. Was there a reason for not having an outlet street? Um, at the end of um the lower phase five. Closest to. Phase three.
Yes, there was, and and I probably should have jumped on this one.
Can't hear anybody. Garrett can't hear you.
Yep.
How about now?
So it's better when Mr. Four unmutes his and you keep yours muted. There you go. Try that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. All right. Um, so. Yes, I should have jumped on this when when Tori teed it up for me earlier regarding topography. Um, the lack of a connector on Wheat Ridge is largely driven by the steep slopes. Um, on the backs of those lots, for example, lot sixty to lot thirty. Um, those slopes range uh between fifteen and thirty percent through that hill. Um, and there was no feasible way because of the short distance, the short offset between Wheat Ridge and. Um, what's shown is North Town Road. There is actually um Sweetgrass. Um, there wasn't enough room to put in a a road that met city standard. So uh we went with cul-de-sacs uh that meet the current subdivision regulations.
Okay, um. Then, it seems to me that the topography of um. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, the topography of phase five is back to back. Um, on Wheat Ridge in that same area. Um. And there's not much space in between, but but it seems like that's a, there is, I can't tell from the drawing if there is. Topography in the way or not. You have a lot of back to back. There are lots of them. Sorry. Lot sixty-one or sixty-three. And opposite lot twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So, so they're they're, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, there's actually a drainage swell between those two. Um, the backs of those lots uh will drain to that swell. It's it's kind of forced. Again, we had to be creative with this site, um but there's a swale that actually runs. Westerly or southwesterly to that proposed uh storm drainage pond. Within common open space B.
Is this the pedestrian map or the trail map or?
So this is, this is the preliminary plat drawing and. The line in brown, almost orange, that's the proposed trail. So if you, I guess if you started on the third page of the plat, which is thirteen of the packet. Um, the trail starts all the way down at scenic trail. And proceeds northerly um along the backside of the lots. All the way up, it circles around um. All the way up above Blue Stem, hooks up with the sidewalk system. Um, crosses the road at at Blue Stem and Wildry at a crosswalk. And then continues southerly all the way back through the open space and ties back into um scenic trail.
So, um. Sorry, I kind of missed the first part of that. My question is. Then on the. Near the phase five cul-de-sac, is that, is there a path connecting? These. Four A to five?
Yes, it's, so there's two lots that were left out. Um, on Wheat Ridge within phase five. Um, that's a public utility easement. Well, it's actually just open space is what that is. Part of that. Is snow storage area. Um, if we have a winter like we're having right now. Um, Public Works guys need somewhere to put that snow, so that's going to be lay down curb. And there's also going to be trail that cuts through that open space as well.
Could you put your cursor on that part so you can show exactly where you were just talking about?
I'm not running the cursor.
Oh, you're not running the, oh, you're not running the cursor.
There you go.
This the, this the open space you're talking about, Garrett?
Yes, yeah, tho- those two lots were left out to accommodate. Snow storage, uh storm easement and trail connectivity.
Okay, the question I have is if you go to your left and you go to the cul-de-sac at the opposite end. So is there any connection from that cul-de-sac going straight down to your orange line?
Um, there is not that gets back to the to that main trail, but there is an easement. It looks like maybe the. This image is is lagging a little bit potentially. There's an easement that runs southwest. Um, that would be lots one twelve and sixty-four. And again, I say easement, but we actually made that um open space. So there's no lot area there that's both for storm drainage and. An access point to that common open space B.
Right, well, it it just seemed to me that that. When I've been up there, that you got great, the roads go north, south. But there isn't that much room to go in between the houses to go across. Um, east-west. Do you have any east-west in there anywhere?
Well, there's um. Let me pull up my, my numbers here. Can't find, there, there's thousands of feet of sidewalk. Um, that runs along all of those roads. So Wildry is connected to. Sweetgrass is connected to Wheat Ridge is connected to Blue Stem, which all links back up to that trail system. Um, we didn't have a clear path to get um because of the terrain and because of that storm swell that had to be in the back of those lots. We didn't have a clear path to run a trail um that ran down that hill right there.
So there's on the backside of five A. That's to your boundary, so there's no room for any trail there. You just have to walk on the sidewalk, even though there's. Open land on the other side of it. Is that correct?
Uh, are you talking to the north at this point?
I'm talking uh five A on the left, left cul-de-sac.
Okay, the west end of Wheat Ridge?
Yes.
Uh, to get to the main trail system, you would walk east along the sidewalk and then down Blue Stem. Uh, you could also use that open space between sixty-four and one twelve. To access the open space that's called out as open space B. There's also a significant amount of open space beneath that that's not really shown here, um but that's part of. The North Town overall development with phase three.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Shannon.
Um, may I ask the next, next question?
Absolutely, go for it.
And Garrett, can you? Explain to the planning board what the rationale is on. The phasing of and of this. Proposal and why you chose to start with uh four A instead of doing a continuation. Of phase three, which is now being proposed as phase five.
Sure, I think actually that phase would be um four B. Um. By zoom to. Yeah, the top, the top chunk is that, that that divider line kind of splits it, but really those lots are are within four B there. Um, the rationale, starting at four A, I think because of the length uh required by the city in it. Not only its design standards, but its subdivision regulations, if we were to start at um. Sweetgrass Ave, that would put us over a thousand feet as we continued north and east. And there would be no opportunity to phase it at all. Um, we pretty much have to build out the whole thing at that point. Versus starting at phase four A, uh the proposal is to build a roadway that's less than a thousand feet. Still meet um City of Livingston regulations and not have to request a variance. And then work with you and the Public Works Department. Um, I think, you know, Matt and Bill would tell you they'd love to go build, build this whole thing if if the market conditions. Uh, would support it. You know, I think we all know that we've, we've seen a recent. Uh, major turn in the market and just the ability to. Chunk out or phase out some of this work to to even go get started and get something done. This is kind of necessary at this point, just to get started. So, um, you know, I can see the city's request or concern. Um, or I guess desire for that loop, it will be a benefit. Um, and I think the proposal. That makes the most sense is to go build four A and provide a financial guarantee that that loop's going to happen. And what that does is if, you know, if. These guys fold up shop or or you know, something weird happens in the next three years. They've already provided a financial guarantee that the city's able to go pull and complete that loop. So that's the guarantee.
Did you have any other comments, Shannon?
I think, uh, just one more, um, and this is probably just a continuation of Stacy. There, there is, there is public easement or public access to all the green space locations. For this proposal and that includes previous phases, correct, Garrett?
Yes, every, everything here can be accessed. Um, either via scenic trail, which is suppose external or or adjacent to this development. Or from the roadways within this development.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we, Jonathan, did you have one?
Um, I just wanted to quickly follow up on that. Um, who is responsible for the maintenance of the open spaces at the city or? The homeowner association or who is?
Association, yeah. It would be, it would be the HOA, which, which is in the covenants already.
Okay, thank you. Um, Tori, did you have another comment or question?
Just a related question. Um. Uh, so is the, will the public, so it, so if the HOA is maintaining this open space. Will folks who do not live in the subdivision have access? So is this actually public access or is it access for? Only for members of the subdivision?
I don't, I don't think legally you could block the public out, to be honest, you know, so the answer to that. Uh, functionally is that there's um two accesses that tie all the way down to. Scenic Trail, which is a public right away. Um, so a vehicle could park there or bike there or walk there, whatever. And utilize this entire trail system, which all of the open space um is dedicated. Uh, to the public.
Thank you.
Um, uh, hold on one second. Misha or Taya, do you, either of you have any questions? Okay, perfect. Stacy, I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance. Do you want to go ahead?
Um, it just occurred to me that uh there is no. Um, planned space for any uh public transportation on any of these streets. Um, you know, for a parking spot for, say, the Wind Rider. Um, other than saying, oh, well, they'll, they'll get it down at the end, at the very bottom on the. Um, and I don't know, that's, that's, it gets to be a very long loop, so I didn't know if you had thought of. Planning. An extra space because I don't think anybody would want it in front of their house to have a bus stop.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to have Bill answer that if we. We're gonna, we're gonna try to have Bill answer that if we can, if we can figure out our microphone. Keep yours off, Bill, just run through Matt's.
Can I do that?
Can you hear Bill?
Yes, yeah.
Alright, fine. But actually, we have donated over the last um. Three years, I believe, uh, money towards Streamline. And they currently stop at the intersection of Scenic Drive and Prairie View. And uh, I'm not sure that there's adequate. Um, traffic at this point for the bus system to support a. Shelter of some kind, but I think that's something we could look at down the road. We've got a. We have a little bit of open space uh, right on the. Uh, east side of Scenic Drive as you enter the development. Where we might be able to accommodate. Uh, some type of shelter in the future, but we haven't really thought that through yet. But currently the buses miss servicing the area.
And it's currently, sorry, it's currently stopping where?
On the corner of Scenic Drive in Prairie, uh, is it Prairie View? I never get it right.
Trail subdivision, Stacy.
Yes. Where it can service Ridge View, it can service North Town, it can service Armory, the school district property. The condominiums, all, all the rest of it as well. It's pretty centrally located to our subdivision for sure.
Okay. Okay. My answers were, my questions were answered by other planning board members. So I think everyone has had a chance, if not more than one. So I think we should move into public comment at this point. And then after we close public comment, the planning board will have additional time to, for discussion and any other technical questions if you have them. So thanks all for a great Q and A session. Let's go ahead and move this into public comment. So again, uh, folks in the audience, if you are not speaking, could you please mute your phones? And or your computers. There was some background noise earlier. Um, so if you can figure out how to mute that, if you're not speaking, if you would like to make a comment. Feel free to turn your camera on, unmute, state your name and your address, and you've got a three minute. Window for making a comment. So, oh, I do see RTB. I see your hand waving and your screen is on. Would you like to unmute, state your name and your address and make your comment, please?
Sure, Robert Ballard. Um, twelve eleven Sweetgrass Lane.
Thank you. Make your comment, please.
Okay, I've got a few. The uh, first one is. The um. As a homeowner here, I would go along with the variance. It doesn't make any sense at all. To, to do alleys with the topography and the setup. And it also would probably bankrupt the developers. Second thing is. Um, there's been no uh, collaboration between the developer. And the owners on Sweetgrass. I think there's twenty-two lots, something like that. And um, th- there are some issues, I, I. The map that was showed uh, about trails didn't, didn't show any trails. Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, it didn't show any trails between. Uh, I guess it's Prairie and Sweetgrass. And no tie-in at all. Um, is that a possibility? The, just trail or the access to the um. Open spaces, uh, one of the board members pointed out. Uh, there's north, south access, but there's no east, west. And it would be really nice if the open spaces. Um. Could be tied in somehow to get. Um, there was a question about why start at four A and from a neighborhood standpoint. We don't want um. All the constructions going up Sweetgrass. The, the neighborhood has been dealing with. Uh, not the infrastructure, construction, but just construction in general. For the last two years. And by starting all the infrastructure. Uh, up Sweetgrass would not be a good thing at all. So starting it uh, on the other side and moving up makes all the sense in the world. Um. Couple comments. From, on the staff report. Um. I think the most important one is, it's been mentioned a lot. Uh, the topography here is quite steep. And there are two lots on Sweetgrass that have carved out probably. A thirty-foot cliff in the back of their, their lots. And I think the topography on um. Four A and four B uh, could be even worse. And so um, I think affects on natural environment six C. Uh. The staff answer was no, and I, I'm not sure that's correct at all. Um, on animals, um. I, I don't suppose that this is uh, um. You know, a major thing, but there is a herd of about twenty to twenty-five pronghorn. Uh, not only on, on the developed property, but up above and more up above than on the developed property. Which will be a thing. Um, I don't think it's major. Transition zone or anything, but that, you know, that should be noted.
You are running over on your time, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Please feel free to turn your camera on or unmute.
Be able to hear me?
Yes, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, yeah, I'm unable to see anything because we're just calling in on the phone. So my name is Andy Hathaway. And I'm, I live at twelve eighteen Sweetgrass Lane. And I kind of jumped on the call earlier. It's not really a comment, but more of a question. What is the actual status of the variance request for the alleyway? That's really my only question. I'll go back on you. Thank you.
And hopefully we can address that perhaps after public comment. Any other public comment? I'm not seeing anyone. Last call for public comment. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and we're moving into board questions and discussions. I don't know if anybody has an answer for the gentleman's uh, question about the status of the variance. Is that something the staff could answer?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Uh, if I understood the question correctly, the status is, it's up for consideration with the board. You'll need to vote on that separately from the actual recommendation on the subdivision.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go through uh, with discussion. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and just make sure everybody gets a chance. So let's just start with who I see on my screen. Um, Jim Barrett, do you wanna, do you wanna start making any uh, comments or questions for discussion?
Yes, it's back to the water issue. And, and I have a question, if I may, for Shannon Holmes. Um, Shannon, a couple of. Meetings ago. Just in passing, you mentioned that. The capacity of the city's, I think he said seven wells. Is something like four point five million. Uh, gallons. And that the current. Status is that is that we're already up to four point something or other. Um. I, I looked at the uh. The calculations of the water use predicted for this phase. Um. In addition to the other phases. And I was just curious. Um, do you have any way of? Judging? If you could maybe reiterate what you said before about this capacity of the city and how. Uh, this. Or any development may uh, impact. The city's ability to provide water. In the future.
Thank you, Jim. Um, and you are correct, and. Like I said, Garrett, Garrett provided his water sewer design reports to Matt McGee. Martha and I reviewed those. We, we ran those in our model and. We, we do have adequate capacity, um. To, to the point that you were. Bringing up, uh, we did see some of the highest or the highest water usage in Livingston uh, in my tenure this. Past summer. Um, we do have six wells and their capacity is, is around four point. Four to four point five million gallons per day, and we were seeing usage of up to four point seven. Um, I think the important topic on that is we, we still have three million gallons of storage. Um, and with our pressure reducing valve. Um, you know, we, we can keep our two million gallon. Reservoir and one million gallon full and, and, and we are dipping into the reserves. By a couple hundred thousand and, but, but it's really in those. Peak usage weeks and third week of July through about mid, mid-August is when we're seeing, is what we, we saw that this year. So um, keep in mind, we still have three million gallons of storage.
Okay, um, that three million gallons. Would be available in one day?
Absolutely.
And then it would be another three million gallons the next day, I guess I've. Um. Does that mean that that three million capacity just is automatically there every day? So we actually have like seven million of water?
Certainly, so, so really in layman's terms. We consistently have. Anywhere from two point seven to three, three million gallons of storage on any given day. Uh, during our peak usage. So, so our, what we experienced this year is, is our wells running. Um. They, they did not keep up with the demand, so we were dipping into our storage, but only a small percentage.
Okay. Can you predict? The um. Can you predict the future on what that water sit, situation is gonna look like in five years?
It, it really depends on uh, what percentage of growth Livingston experiences. So, you know, we do have a water master plan. And we do have projections of growth and, and at this point. Um, we use the most, we, we can use the most current information that's uh, in the updated growth policy from twenty twenty-one and project. Project that out. Um, if, if, if you look at the city's current strategic plan. Um, you know, building a new well is, is a, a top seven infrastructure priority. Um. City administration's also looking at other, um, other options and those include. Food, um, tiered water rates where higher water users um, could possibly pay a higher rate. Instead of it being the same. Per thousand gallons all the way up to people that are using up to a hundred fifty thousand gallons per month. So we, we can look at tiered water rates that certainly promote water conservation.
Okay, one just quick aside, um. The city's website on the water department says that the uh. The pressure, the water pressure is something like eighty to ninety. Uh, PSI. And the average house typically is about fifty to sixty. Is there a reason for that high water pressure? Um, in the system?
It's really a factor of the elevation of our reservoirs. So if you look at where the two million gallon tank. Is or one million, that, that's really what is setting the pressure for the, our whole town.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Misha, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like? No, okay, Taya, do you have any?
No questions, just a comment. Um, I appreciated Garrett's thorough uh, presentation. I think he. Spent time addressing, you know, concerns, previous concerns that this planning board has had. Um, given the topography, I very much understand the request for the variance.
Okay, thanks, Taya. Stacy, do you have any more questions or discussion?
Um. I will check my list.
I can come back to you too, Stacy.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, Jonathan, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, I guess. We, I, let's see, Garrett kind of touched on this, but um. FWP's letter said, recommended um, wildlife mitigation, including bear resistant garbage cans. And um, Garrett, it was my understanding that that's something that. The developer is open to as a condition of approval.
Are you looking for an answer from him, Jonathan?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is Garrett. Thanks for the question. Um, a- as I stated. You know, that would be, that was proposed by FWP for something to consider. We, we've called waste management. We've talked to Public Works. Doesn't sound like something that Livingston's really doing right now anywhere. Um, it really, you know, Matt and Bill have, have their thumb on the pulse of those first three phases that. You know, the HOA um, of what's out there right now, and it doesn't seem to be an actual problem. It feels a little bit more like maybe, maybe a, a blanket statement. Um, I think, you know, if it became a problem, that's something that they could address with the covenant. Um, but based on what's actually happening out there right now, I, I don't think it is a problem.
Okay, um, so that. Um, and then I guess I had another question. I, it was my understanding that. Where there was a comment from the Greater Yellowstone Coalition about um, the FWP. Letter, and I don't think the planning board received that. Did we?
I did not receive any public comment. On this. Prior to tonight. I don't know, Jim, did you receive any emails for public comment?
No, Madam Chair, I have not seen that either.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, I have a copy of that, but I guess it was um, not received, so I will. Um, see who, I'll, I'll follow up with that, I guess. And then um, the, so I guess I just had a couple of other. Just conditions of approval that I was hoping that we could maybe discuss, which was, one was a covenant, um. May, or a condition of approval that the covenants allow full buildout under R two. Um, which would conflict with the covenants that were provided to us. I also was hoping for a condition of approval. To require bear resistant garbage cans. And um, also a special improvement district waiver. Um, for a proposed crossing um, to the north side and then um. Yeah, I think, and then, oh yeah, uh, pronghorn. As condition of approval that all fencing is pronghorn friendly based off of the public comment. So those were the things that I was, that I've heard this evening that I would like to potentially talk about as conditions of approval.
Okay, Jonathan, hold on one second, Stacy. So, uh, I just want to make sure I get them right. So bear resistance garbage cans, full buildout of R two.
Yeah.
waiver of an SID for proposed crossing. waiver of an SID for proposed crossing. And then pronghorn friendly fencing.
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you have anything else you want to add, Jonathan?
I don't think so right now.
Okay. Go ahead, Stacy, are you ready?
Well, I was just curious, are we going to have a chance to talk about each person's requests or suggestions for conditions? Or is this that time? Or are we going, I don't want to get into the the situation where we have to approve or disapprove as a group people's suggestions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Shannon.
A point of, point of order.
Okay.
We, we need to ultimately vote on the variance request and then the subdivision. And I, I would assume that they would need to be in that order. And would it make sense to have the condition discussion based on the recommendation to approve or to approve or not approve the subdivision? And then be able to have discussions on conditions?
I think that sounds fine. So, so right now we're just going through board discussion and Q and A. I think that a, as Shannon's mentioning, the variance vote usually comes first and then the subdivision with any more proposed conditions if necessary. So so yes, I think that is correct, Shannon. And I guess what I'm doing right now is kind of going through board comment and discussion. But since Jonathan mentioned that, I just wanted to jot them down and make sure of them. Is that, are we good to proceed with Q and A? After we got public comment and the applications, the applicant's presentation? Does, am I, am I going, are you feeling comfortable by, with this discussion, Shannon? Is that what you're saying? Hold on, everybody's got their hand up.
I, I was just, I think my goal was to be respectful of everybody's time and we can all talk about conditions that I, I feel like we have to have a motion, we should have a motion before we really get into the condition discussion. But that's again, my personal opinion.
Okay, well, I'm happy to entertain a motion if anybody has one.
Uh, can we all have a chance to speak on the, on, on the proposal before we move to a motion?
Absolutely. Let's keep going. Sounds great. So Jonathan, do you have anything else you'd like to continue with?
No, I guess I just wanted to, I was iterating those as conditions of approval because those are my concerns that that this would not allow full buildout of the subdivision because I feel like this. And then if, if just have only single family homes, I don't feel like this complies with the growth policy in a number of ways, including a mix of housing, mixing land uses, promoting ADUs, taking advantage of compact building design and strengthening development toward existing communities. And I just think that I was making sure, or saying those conditions of approval as holes that I see, I guess, that I wanted to raise in my discussion. And so I think that that's my concern there. My concern was that we, that the FWP letter was disregarded. And then the traffic impact study relies heavily on the North Side Transportation Plan, which I think has serious flaws, but also does promote an eventual crossing, which is why I think that an SID waiver there is important. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, we're going to move down the line here. Tori, what comments do you have or questions?
Uh, thanks for the opportunity. So the, I mean, the, the, the first, and I'd say ma- major issue at hand is the variance from the subdivision regulation, which requires alleys. And the, the description, part of the description of, of the require, of, or the, the lack of need to comply with that requirement leaned on the fact that services would be able to be provided by the, the roads themselves. And that, that actually kind of describes a level of, or some of the nuance of the reason for alleys in the first place. Um, which is that, you know, so one of, one of the reasons for alleys as, as the engineer described is for efficient provision of, of city services. But another, another reason for, or at least externality of design that's based on, on blocks and alleys is the orientation of transportation infrastructure at the back of a, of a house. Um, and so the there are a lot of effects of that kind of design. One of which is that the, the, the way that the house faces the street is, is designed such that it invites pedestrians instead of cars to the front of the house. So that, the, the, the design standpoint of a block and alley system is part of the reason that the growth policy promoted that, that paradigm. And it, and it is, and it is an effect of that regulation. So by, by avoiding that type of design, we're really, I just want to point out that by, by allowing for the, that variance, what we're saying is that we're okay with an automobile oriented design in this neighborhood. Now, that's, an automobile oriented design in this neighborhood is consistent with the previous phases of the development. To a certain degree, it's consistent with other developments in this part of town. This is certainly a more automobile oriented part of town when you compare it to the traditional neighborhoods of, of you know, the parts of town that were, were developed a long time ago. But then there, there are other elements of the design of this subdivision that, that give me pause. Namely, the, the curvilinear streets, meaning curvy instead of straight. And the inclusion of, of cul-de-sacs. So that, that is typical suburban style development. And again, that kind of development leads to leads to transportation outcomes that include higher reliance on automobiles. One of the reasons for that, beyond just the, the aesthetics, is the fact that in a curvilinear street network, distances from origins to destinations are made further by the, by just the nature of, of those curves. So if you live in that cul-de-sac and you're trying to go to somewhere in town, that trip is going to be made further by, by the nature of, of those curvy streets. So these are, you know, these are design elements of the, of the proposal that I take issue with and I do think run counter to the spirit of the growth policy. However, I am satisfied. Or I, I do think that the, the the point about the topography is a legitimate claim and that the topography of, of the parcel and complying with the regulations as they are would potentially cause undue harm to, to the, the developer. So in this case, I think that there's actually a legitimate cause for a variance. But the outcome is one that makes me uncomfortable and that I is not, not my preference. And I don't think is the preference of, of our community. And, and I, I think the outcome is going to be an automobile oriented neighborhood. That's going to cause more traffic on, on the north side, more traffic at the, at the railroad crossings. And, you know, continue the north side's progression towards Bozeman style suburbia instead of the Livingston that a lot of, a lot of our residents cherish. So I'll leave it at that. And I'll, I'll give my fellow board members a chance to, to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tori. So we've gone through everybody except for me. I just have one question and it's really just a question and it's for the developers. So anybody can answer this. But you mentioned in your presentation, Garrett, that the original design was considering five hundred and fifty homes and you reduced that design down to two hundred and thirty-seven. I was just curious why you did that?
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to respond. No, I referenced the North Side Transportation Plan that had planned for up to five hundred and fifty homes on the parcel. That's totally separate, you know, something that the city had, had put together through a consultant. Our proposal is pretty much consistent with the master plan that the planning board and, and commission has seen three times. It's actually just a couple of lots less, as I mentioned on Blue Stem Way. Looking at the topography, this go around, we actually dropped a couple of lots. But it is largely consistent with all master plans previously submitted.
Okay, sorry, I must have misunderstood. Thank you. Okay. Well, per Shannon's reminder of our order, we have the variance to vote on first. And then we can move on towards the subdivision. Would anyone like to make a motion? Or is there more discussion? Yes, Jim?
I'll move it if we accept the variance.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Stacy. Let's have any more discussion by the board? Okay, hearing none, let's go through. Shannon?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Jim?
Four.
Misha?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Jonathan?
Four.
And I am also four. Okay, so the variance passes. Now we can move on to the subdivision review. We have had some comment so far on different discussion points for conditions of approval. And we did hear some public comment also. So I'm going to go ahead and go back around to each board member and have you have a turn. If we have to go twice, we can, but let's go one by one. And let's start again. I'll just start from the top of my screen. Jim, do you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. I just have a sort of a question. I, I looked at all the all the, the maps and all the presentation that, the five hundred pages of stuff. It appears that this, this phase is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Garrett. It's essentially surrounded on three sides. Or it becomes a third side. Am I, am I reading that map right?
Uh, well, I'd say there's development immediately west right now. There's development immediately south across scenic trail. You know, this development obviously proposes to infill on this parcel. And then ultimately after phase five, which has not been proposed yet. But the ultimate plan is, is to connect to the roadways to the east, which is already developed as city lots. The only vacant land really, or planned vacant land would be that parcel to the north. Which currently, from what I understand, it does not have plans to develop in the near future.
Okay, so this is, could it be described as sort of a infill within an infill? Or?
Infill is a great word for this one. Absolutely. As, as we, as we mentioned, it's in the city, it's annexed, it's, it's got similar density development around it. And to highlight again, it's, it's the same master plan that's been approved for development previously by this board and the commission.
Thank you.
Okay. Misha, do you have any questions or comment?
Yes, regarding the bear trash cans, I think I remember from past meetings that Shannon had said that they aren't something that is available to Livingston. So I would be concerned about making that a condition if it's not possible right now with the trash can situation and what's out there on the market. That's it.
Shannon, did you say something about it would be really difficult for the garbage trucks to collect garbage out of a bear proof? Is that, that, I kind of remember that too.
So no, we're experiencing supply thing issues all across the board in public works. I think my statement was we, we, we can we can use bear proof garbage containers in Livingston. We, we do not currently have any in our inventory. Uh, they are seven to eight times the cost of a, of a residential ninety-six gallon container. So it, it's really a, a cost issue if, if if that is something that the commission wants to explore and, and as we implement growth policy recommendations. But we're looking at seven to eight times the cost for, for a residential container.
Okay. Uh, Taya, do you have any questions or comments?
I had a question, but it was more just about process and then a comment. So with the conditions, are we going to be voting on those individually? Because I, my only concern is that if there's conditions that say like I don't agree with all of them.
So I'm just, maybe help me out here, city staff, but if I recall correctly, we discuss conditions and then someone makes a motion. That is, so we have choices, right? We can make a motion with uh, accepting the staff's conditions and adding extra conditions on there. And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, in that motion, all the conditions need to be captured and put on that. If it fails because one or two conditions are not included, then it gets denied. And then we would, we would make a new, somebody would make a new motion. No, am I wrong?
I, I think, Jesse.
Well, I was just going to say, let's have the staff just clarify.
Okay.
Jim or Jennifer, will you clarify how that, how that goes?
Sure, Jesse. I think as you described it, is, is exactly what you need to do. Make a motion, including either staff or staff and board added conditions. Goes to vote. If it fails for whatever reason, because something was not included or too much was included, amend the motion and do the voting again.
Okay. Thank you. Does that make sense?
It does. And then my comment was just Jonathan, I love pronghorn. I love wildlife friendly fencing. The only concern is this is a residential area and you do need fences to contain domestic animals. So I, I would be hesitant to include that.
Okay. Thank you, Taya. Stacy, now you're up. What would you like to comment?
Well, I just, I just kind of disagree with the process. I think of having our individual conditions and having to go through the the voting down of the whole thing. I think it would be much simpler to just deal with our additional conditions and eliminate them one at a time, but, or keep them. But that's a, maybe our city planner has an, or, or maybe, but that's just my opinion. Anyway.
Stacy, why don't you, I'm keeping track of the conditions that people have mentioned. So if you have some, why don't you just let me know in the group?
Okay. All right. I'm, I do not think that we need to have bear proof garbage cans. I think that is an unnecessary thing. I don't think there's, there's probably more deer that wander around Livingston than, than there are bears. I also think that I, I really am not in favor of cul-de-sacs and would encourage the developers to look in the future phasing to have the least amount or none at all of cul-de-sacs. And to be able to connect up with their existing streets would be the most beneficial. Given that there are two in this proposal, I've been caught in curving streets before and without having And uh without having any signage that tells me I'm on a cul-de-sac, I think that added to. Uh, the city staff's number five condition to add uh no outlet signs be put up or dead end. Uh, as part of the signage in front of those two cul-de-sacs would be beneficial. Um. I also have a question kind of on the, the lighting. I don't know if anybody has. Gone through up Sweetgrass Street at night to see if there's holes. Um, I was given a comment that potentially they're in a space too far apart, so that there's not light that goes. Like maybe if you added one more set of streetlights. Um, as you continue up the road, that it might uh be lit all the way up and it wouldn't be um a safety hazard. And. I guess the other would be just to continue to look at the east-west um. Access to the open spaces and if there was a way to put um. Any kind of access between the end of Sweetgrass and, and, and all of these east-west. Um. That would be beneficial to. The people who like to walk around and not just have to be on the street to go all the way up to the end. Of the street to then go to the top of the hill and come back down to be able to go across. So if there was a way to keep that in mind. And that is all that I have.
Okay, let me just see. Stacy, I'm gonna read back what I think I caught from you, just so I make sure I have it. So you had this comment about cul-de-sacs connecting with existing streets. Looking at that towards the future, I don't know if that was a condition for this particular subdivision. Okay.
That's not a condition.
Right. Okay, so number adding no outlet signs to the city staff's number five condition for signage. I'm curious about the streetlights piece and if that has to do with the night sky ordinance. And whether there was a rationale behind wh- why there aren't lights all the way up, or is that just simply because they haven't developed enough and passed that?
Madam Chair?
No, no, that's not, there's, there are lights there.
Well, ma- madam chair, if I may. Um. I'm gonna compliment the developer in this, that uh this subdivision was the first subdivision. In the city of Livingston to actually meet the night sky ordinance.
Okay.
Those are night sky friendly lights. They have shades. Um, for the adjacent residents and they have been spaced for the direction of the Public Works Department. And our standards for streetlights.
Okay.
And.
Okay. Shannon, it just might be that um maybe because they are night sky friendly, they need to be spaced a little closer together. I don't know. Just something to look into.
Okay, so that is not a condition you're recommending though.
No, it is not a condition.
And then the last one is this uh comment and this concern from you about east-west open spaces. Could they be tied in? Is that a condition that you're concerned with?
At this point, I don't see how, yeah, I can make it a condition, given the, the um plat here.
Yeah.
But if there is. I don't know, Garrett, do you have any thoughts on that? On any east-west connections?
Uh, yeah, you know, um, I guess my, my comments would just go back to the design of the subdivision and. And point out, you know, the thirty-seven hundred lineal feet of trail that, that these guys are proposing to do. That's. That's not a, a small thing, you know, to go be able to access um all of that open space, you know, honestly, the public. If you're thinking about the public here, they're gonna um access it from scenic trail. You know, the homeowners, if they want to go access it east-west as, as, as you move north there and get kinda more interior to the development. They can just go out their back door and access it at that point. So. I think I, I understand, you know, I think where, where you're going with it and just trying to provide additional access, but. I really think um that we put a lot of thought into this and, and gave some really good access from multiple points. Um, with this trail plus sidewalk on both sides of the street, I think. I think most people would look at it and say the connectivity is, is pretty good overall.
Okay, great. And that's all I had for you, Stacy. Uh, let's go to Jonathan.
Um, yeah, I, thanks to Taya, I agree with the about the pronghorn thing. Um, and then the we should jump notch, not be conditioned. Um, I do think that the bear-proof trashcans or. Some sort of covenant that requires you to keep your garbage inside until pickup time. Um, it should be a requirement. I. Um, you can buy bear-proof trashcans at Ace Hardware now. Um, I think that. Um, it's something that we need to transition to. FWP has a lot of um bear conflicts in town. And um they recommended bear-proof, bear-resistant garbage cans and bear mitigations for a reason. And um I think we have to start somewhere, and I think this would be a fine place to start because it is building in the wildlife urban interface. Um, there's bears up in this area this summer, a few different times um that we heard about. So um I just think that that's something that is worthwhile. Um, but other than that, I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Thanks. How specific, hold on a second, how specific? Um, Jim Woodhall, so if, if there was a, you know, can, can bear mitigation be a condition? And that be specific enough for wildlife mitigation or bear mitigation specifically?
Can you repeat that for me, madam chair?
I guess I'm just trying to get these conditions down from the different board members, and so trying to understand Jonathan said. Bear-proof garbage can or keeping bears in or keeping garbage in. People's homes until it's time to pick them up. Would, would that be an appropriate condition? Requesting bear mitigation for garbage?
It's kind of a city attorney sort of question, but I'll have to make an answer for you. Both of those could be voluntary covenants of the development.
Okay.
Um, however, I think both could also be ordinance adjustments for the city as a whole. I think that would probably be more appropriate.
Okay.
So the city, I don't think currently has a regulation about only having the cans outside during pickup time. Uh, that may be something that we might wanna suggest the city commission to discuss. Not just for this subdivision, but for the city in general.
Okay.
And, and Jesse, isn't it true that the covenants cover that you have to have the, for, for that area? That the garbage cans has to be, have to be inside their garage?
I have to look, there were a lot of covenants, but may, may, maybe, actually, do you guys know developers? Was that in your covenants? There was something about. Oh, no, this packet is big.
Madam Chair, I think I saw that in there too.
Okay.
In the covenants.
Yeah, okay. Jonathan, maybe take a look at that. Okay. I think we've gone through everyone. I can go through. If anybody has one final thing, otherwise I'm gonna read what we have.
Madam Chair.
Oh.
Yes, Shannon?
If, if, if we are all as board members talking about um conditions, I, I'd like to add my.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Shannon. Yes, go ahead. Sorry, I look at the screens, my squares and your.
Well, no, I, I appreciate the opportunity, um, and none of these will be any surprise to Garrett. Matter of fact, we've talked about them for the last several weeks, so um, you know, I, I do agree with. The board members that have concerns with cul-de-sacs, um. I can tell you that uh. The, the existing sweet, sweet grass lane as a fact was, uh, approved by our previous planning board and commission. And exceeded the length uh allowed in our subdivision regs, so we, we have to deal with that situation. Um, our current subdivision regs allow up to a thousand foot cul-de-sac. Our current design standards, which have been updated since the subdivision regs uh allow for up to a five hundred feet. So I will give Garrett and the developer credit that they have kinda been in the middle of that. They, they could technically meet our regs and go up to a thousand feet and they're at six eighty. Um, that being said, uh, to address the concerns that I have with long cul-de-sacs. Um, I would like to add additional conditions that really uh pertain to. Um, garbage collection and additional snow, snow storage. So I, I'd like to put a condition that we have adequate snow storage, you know, at each cul-de-sac. And, and that may include widening the right-of-way uh on the west cul-de-sac to give us adequate. Uh, volume for snow storage. I think Garrett has addressed other areas uh in phases five. Uh, that have adequate snow storage, but um. I'd like to recommend the condition that, that the cul-de-sacs are, have no on-street parking. To help us with garbage collection with curbside pickup for garbage and for snow removal uh in those areas. And last but not least, um, I have an issue with the report on stormwater. Um, randomly, three times in the nine, almost ten years I've been the director, we've had some flash. Spring melting events that, that are not a result of this subdivision, but certainly area in the county above. Um, ridgy trails. And my request would be to add a, a condition to look at the possibility of adding additional volume. To stormwater ponds to help mitigate uh those events.
Okay. You could have kayaked down Eighth Street. I was, I, that's what I quit. Um, could you just tell me, Shannon, that you cut out at one point, so adequate, adequate snow storage at each cul-de-sac? And then did you say no on-street parking there, or what was the, what was the piece that you mentioned?
Yes, madam chair, be my recommendation that the cul-de-sacs are, are marked no, no on-street parking.
Okay, thank you.
Statically room for garbage trucks, fire trucks and, and for our snow removal equipment to be able to. Clean those areas up.
Shannon, can you be a little more specific? You're talking about at the beginning of the radius?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did I miss, Tori, did you, did I miss anyone else? I'm sorry. Tori, did you have any comments? Oh, I think you went already.
I, I, I don't have any conditions to add. I do, I guess I do have questions about two of. Um, Jonathan's conditions, though. It would not be inappropriate.
Yes, go ahead.
Jonathan, will you start by explaining what you mean by an SID waiver on the proposed crossing?
Yeah, um, just in the past, when we were discussing this, um, we required, um. I guess, Jim, could you answer that? What, what did we, what, what have we been requiring for SIDs for like uh Mountain View and stuff?
Madam Chair, can I answer that please?
Yes, please, Jim.
Uh, in the past, we had had a standard SID waiver for rail crossing on uh recent subdivisions. That was prior to the public vote to deny the bill levy for that project. Uh, the way that was packaged, the SID was a separate funding mechanism in addition to that bill levy. So at this point, we have no bill levy, so in, in SID to cover the entire fifteen million dollars. Probably, we, we could certainly have it in place, but the chances of getting that approved by the voters would be very difficult. Excuse me, it's not up for election, but it's up for protest to those people who would be paying it. And fifty-one percent protest would kill an SID.
So it's, it's a waiver from the right to protest, is that right? It's not a waiver from inclusion in, in the SID.
Correct, it's right to protest.
Okay, that was, that was the clarification I needed. Thank you. Um, and then I'll, I'll move on to my, my next question for Jonathan. Jonathan, you, you, you referenced full build-out to R2. By that, did you mean that each lot? Would be required to build two residences? Is that, is that what you're saying by full build-out to R2?
No, I'm saying that I meant that. Um. Covenant that currently prevents you from building more than a single-family residential. Um, one single-family residence that those covenants be removed and not applicable in this area because. Uh, that is, that's not gonna, that, I think, I don't think that would comply with the policy and many other things. But I think that we should require them to allow more than a sing, one family residence allowed per lot. So they, so there shouldn't be covenants that can say no ADUs or no duplexes.
So I think that's covenant, it was like eleven point oh one and eleven point oh two, so maybe the, the, it, it's. Removing or changing those to allow for all R2. Dwelling.
Or. Or just updating the covenants to reflect the R2 zoning.
Right, and those are, that was. Oh, eleven point one and eleven point two, I think.
Okay, well, that answered, that answers both my questions. Thank you.
Sure thing. Okay, I'm gonna run through what I have and then we can think about entertaining a motion. So uh, the first kind of condition I've heard is what we just mentioned is amending the covenants. To reflect R2 zonings. The second one was the SID waiver for proposed crossing. The uh third was uh adding uh no outlet signs to the city's. Recommendation number five. And then the next one is adequate snow storage at each cul-de-sac. Uh, require no on-street parking signage and then stormwater possibly. Stormwater uh possibly to add additional volumes to stormwater ponds. The possibility to add additional volume to stormwater ponds. I think I got them all. Yes, Jonathan?
Um, you didn't include the bear.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So, uh, address the covenant for mitigation for. Garbage. Do you want in that, are, are you suggesting to, to have a condition be require bear-proof garbage cans?
I personally am, think that's the best, but, yes.
Okay, that was one too. Alright, did I miss anybody else's? Alright, planning board, now what would you like to do? Yes, Misha?
So, just point of order. We're now voting on all of this, but what if we don't agree with all of those items?
Then you've, then you vote no.
And then what?
And, and then you amend the motion.
Okay.
Point, point of order, I believe you can, point of order, I think you can make an amended motion. You make the formal motion and then you can amend that motion. If you wanted to delete or add to.
I think so.
Point of order.
Yes. Yes, Jim.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we approve the subdivision with all the conditions. With the exception of the bear-proof garbage containers.
Including the city's commission, the cities? That's okay.
Second that.
Misha, seconds. Any discussion on that? Okay, let's vote. Shannon?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Jim? Barrett?
Four.
Okay, thank you. Misha?
Four.
Taya?
One.
Tori?
Four.
Jonathan?
Four.
Jesse's four. Okay, good, motion passes. Nice work. Alright, thank you, uh, everyone. Jesse's four. Okay, good. Motion passes. Nice work. All right. Thank you, uh, everyone. Um, we are moving on to the next agenda item. Which is voting on. Uh, review, discuss, recommend applicants for the vacant seat. Um, one thing I wasn't sure of, hold on one second, Stacy. Uh, okay, what what's going on? Do we have a?
Point, point, point of order. We can't review, we can't vote on these applicants because we haven't even interviewed them. So I'm point of order. Just. I thought in the past, we we had them in for an interview and then we discussed. To approve, deny, or whatever.
I don't know. It's on the agenda. Whatever, why? We can, we can make a motion to table it and and vote on them a different time. Misha, do you have a comment?
I make a motion to table it until we know who these people are.
Okay. Let's go through it then. Who wants to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do you want to discuss it? Thank you, Karen.
I I I just believe that that the the point is it's not anything, no reflection on either of the candidates, but I just feel like we in the past have had. The opportunity to have them come in for an interview, whether it's in person or on Zoom. And then we had the the vote. Um, that at that meeting. So I maybe would amend the motion to the next meeting. To to table it to the next meeting.
Okay, Taya.
Just curious, were were they invited to to this meeting?
I have no idea. City staff, did anybody invite them to the meeting?
I am not sure, Madam Chair, if Faith invited them or not.
Okay, I just want to note that there is a possibility that the December meeting will be canceled. And then it'll move to the January meeting. So I totally understand if you guys want to wait. It's fine with me. I. Am open to it. The other question I actually had was I did get confirmation from Faith that Amy Schilling is a non-freeholder. I did not get confirmation from Faith that Jim. Or Steven Schmidt is a is a non-freeholder, so I don't know the answer to that either. Do you know that, Jim?
Not positive, but I will get you that information if I can.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to table this until the next meeting, which may be in December. Or it may be in January if we decide, if if we hear from city staff that they're considering canceling the December meeting. So. Let's vote. Shannon.
Four.
Stacy.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Misha.
Four.
Taya.
Four.
Tori.
Four.
Jonathan.
Four.
Okay, and I'm four too. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are these, do these people have applications anywhere?
Yeah, they're in your, yes, and they are in your amended uh planning board agenda. Their applications are at the very bottom, so you'll see all the meeting minutes. And then their applications are on page fourteen is Steven Schmidt. And Amy Schelling is on page fifteen. Amy also included her resume. And Steven only included his. Application.
I see it now. I apologize. I didn't scroll down past the. And the meeting minutes.
No worries. I didn't see them either. I think. There's been a lot of um. Paperwork this time coming through. Sorry, I'm toggling between computer. Okay, let me just see if there's anything else we need to talk about this evening. Um, I just have to pull up another agenda somewhere. There are some staff reports, I'm sure, at the end of this. Um, Shannon, do you want to give up, give any um planning board or planning, city planning?
Yes, I I'll I'll go through kind of a quick synopsis. Um, I'll tell you things are not slowing down for Public Works Building Planning. Um, Jim and I, Martha, Brad are are working on a development project on. Near um that involves four fourplexes. Um, we've. Been continually meeting with Dan Call and his recent purchase and rezoning on Montana Street. And moving forward with residential housing at that location. Uh, we met with. Property owners on Love's Lane that was recently annexed earlier this year. Um, on a development project. There, um, we've had a couple of meetings with per- prospective developers on on the ten acres that was annexed to the city on Rogers Lane. Um, but nothing definitive yet. Um, city project wise, we're. Uh, still moving forward with the Green Acres S I D. Project and the sewer extension and T D and H has. Been surveying and working on design for the next phase of our downtown C I P. And that's going to be the alley between Main and Second Street. From Geyser up to Calendar Street. Um. We have the the hotel project that's moving forward. They've started um on building on that project. And the granary project out on the east end of town where the old agri. Peace was, uh, that's all been approved, uh, site plan and utility services, fire lines has all been approved by the city as well. So. Uh, that's just a little synopsis of what we have going on.
Thank you. Jim, do you want to do a planning update?
I think Shannon covered it. We've got a lot of projects ongoing and that'll be more coming. So we're busy.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for doing all that hard work. Board comments? Any other additional comments? Thanks for keeping me on my toes. Yes, Jim.
Um, I I want to refer to the memo that came from Jennifer. And it talks about the process for the meetings.
Yeah.
And then it described the. What I believe to be the state of Montana's subdivision review questions.
Yes.
Um, and also, uh, I want to refer to. Mister Schroder's comment about. The uh. Subdivision regulations of Livingston. And the growth policies. Being synced. Um, and I guess I just wonder. How does that process work and why? Or now I don't want to ask why, but when do we start working on incorporating the growth policy into the subdivision regulations? So that there is no question. Um, about when we refer to them. That we are within our rights to do that.
Madam Chair, can I answer that?
Yes, please.
Uh, thanks for the question, Jim. Uh, the subdivision regulations, the zoning. The design standards that the city has to public works. Are all components that will implement. The growth policy. Uh, probably the zoning and the design standards were over the subdivision. Subdivision regulations are about. Configuration and layout. Before you get there, you have to get to the zoning and the land use and uh the other ordinances that the city enforces on. Land use. So, yes, the subdivision regulations need to be rewritten. To make sure that they incorporate what we what we also need to rewrite in the zoning ordinance. And our design standards. So it's a package that is going to implement the growth policy. So we will do them incrementally and the city manager will determine our workload and which comes first. But as far as effect to implement the growth policy, I would say from the planning standpoint, the zoning ordinance is probably. Much more reflective or able to implement growth policy than the subdivision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board comments?
I want. I was just wondering when the transition was going to happen between uh Jennifer and if she has a chance to speak tonight and Jim. So. When is that transfer going to happen and? Or is there, or Jim and Jennifer both going to be together, working with the planning board?
Uh, for the time being, Stacy, yes, we're, I'm not going anywhere until Jennifer gets firmly grounded and. And is is comfortable. Uh, but having said that, it'll be as fast as we can. Uh, Jennifer is going to be your planning director and your main point of contact from this point forward. Will be in the background and a resource for her. So we're going to transition as quickly as possible.
Good.
Um. Then the other thing would be just be that in the future, if we could figure out a way to make. Um, any future. Development preliminary plats. Be more readily. User-friendly on the computer, because I think a five hundred and sixty-nine page. File is just. Didn't work on my computer. I mean, I could get it, but I couldn't ever print anything. So I don't know if there's a way to. Look at that in the future to divide it into chunks or or something that might be a little bit more user-friendly.
Yes, Stacy.
That's all I have.
We'll look at that. And we're also, uh, the city commission has decided to move forward in coming back to in-person meetings. And I think that will help. Reviewing these large documents when we're all in the same place and can spread them out on the on the table in large format. Uh, all of that will make things a little easier, I I believe.
Mm-hmm. And I and I don't get me wrong, I do love having um computer access to everything, because, you know. Saves you from having to answer a lot of questions if we have access to it, but. That's all I have.
Thanks, Stacy. Thank you, Jim. Anybody? Okay, let's wrap this up. Thank you very much. Good job, team. And seven fifty. Yes, yep.
Could we just hear from Jennifer and have her give us a little bit of her background or anything? No?
Go for it, Jennifer. You're on the, you're on the stage.
Yeah, hi, um, I I was just trying to sort of sit back and observe. I wasn't. Really involved in in putting all this together, so it was Jim's show. Um. But yeah, hi, I'm Jennifer Saverson. Um, I just got to Livingston. Um, a couple of days before I started with the city, which was November first. So I've been here about two, a little over two weeks. Um, yeah, my background, I've been a working planner for over thirteen years. Um, started in Louisiana, where I'm from, and then I went to Boulder County in Colorado for. Over eight and a half years, originally started working with flood recovery efforts from their twenty thirteen flood and then kind of moved around different jobs. Um. Zoning uh reviews and then access and engineering and grading and drainage reviews for new development. Um, so I'm I'm really excited to be here because I'm I'm looking forward to, you know, I did some bike ped planning in the past and some. Some brownfields work and so just sort of getting to do different parts of of planning again and and branching out. Um. Just sort of one, one thing, uh, Boulder County had a lot of development applications coming in constantly. Um, and so it's everybody sort of, we work together, but you sort of had a focus area. So I'm really looking forward to to meeting all of you. Um, working with you in the future. And um, yeah, I really like Livingston, so I'm excited about it.
And you found a place to live. Yeah.
I did find a place to live. Uh, I've been running it since the middle of September, even though I didn't move here until late October. Um, because it was quite difficult. So I, yeah, I I understand the um, the concerns with. With housing.
Hmm. Great. Well, we're happy to have you, Jennifer. Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us tonight, too.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. I'm I'm here to soak up all all I can before um Jim doesn't answer my questions anymore.
Awesome. All right, anybody else? Let's call it a wrap. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, city staff. Thank you. Seven fifty-five meetings adjourned. Get some sleep. See you later.
Thanks, bye.